Is our video stuff working, the presentations? Stephanie, is the presentation working? I don't.
Yeah, you can't see it?
I don't, I don't know what I'm missing. Is it there? Oh, there it is, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
Apologies. Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for November twenty twenty, uh, twenty-six, twenty-two forty-four is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice, continue its practice, sorry, in accord, including updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until March twenty twenty-five. This hearing with the board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists. They will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments and opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again and the hands should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press star nine to raise and lower your hand. You must press star six to unmute yourself after you have received a request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their name and address first and then provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Stembridge reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call unmute at the appropriate time. Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Langham.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Ms. Weewell.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Mr. Collins.
Morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. Uh, Ms. Panado.
Good morning, Madam Chair, President.
Good morning. And sorry, Stephanie, was there, um, is there a substitute for Mr. Valencia?
No, there isn't, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we are a six-member board. Uh, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, we'll begin this morning with the extensions requested, the requested extensions. If it's nine thirty a.m., I'll read through all of the extensions on the basis of all for one year. If anyone has any questions, um, we can address that when I finish and move on from there. First is case BOA one-three-zero-three-three-nine-seven with the address of one-twenty-four Layton Street. Next, we have case BOA one-three-zero-three-six-five-one with the address of one-twenty-six Wood Street. Next, we have case BOA one-one-four-four-zero-seven-two with the address of two-seventy-three Maverick Street. Along, along with that, we have case BOA one-one-four-four-zero-seven-five with the address of two-seventy-five to two-seventy-nine Maverick Street. And finally, we have case BOA one-zero-two-four-one-seven-seven with the address of two-fifty-nine Quincy Street.
Thank you. Uh, are there any questions from the board? If not, may I, uh, may I hear a motion to grant the extensions as requested?
I make a motion to grant.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yep.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to, to, to board final operative cases. We're with the nine thirty. Uh, the first we have is case BOA one-five-seven-two-eight-eight-five with the address of three Bruce Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yeah, hello. Hello, um, uh, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mike Ross. Unfortunately, on this one, if I may, I need to request a deferral. The Landmarks Commission is still working through some small minor issues. We don't want to have any additional changes to that. So if it would be okay, a quick deferral on this would be, um, would be terrific.
Thank you. Caroline?
We could do December third or December tenth or going into January as well.
Turn your off.
Yeah, December tenth would be terrific. I appreciate that.
May I have a motion?
Make a motion. December tenth.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Next, law board final operative case is case BOA one-five-nine-zero-nine-two-two with the address of one-thirty-one Devon Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
I'm unmuteing you to speak right now?
Hi, everyone. It is a pleasure for me to meet here today. My name is Mayeli and I come from, uh, representing the company Project Seventy-Seven LLC. So, uh, we're working simultaneously into projects. However, the one that we are currently focusing right now is the one-thirty-one, um, project, uh, where we, uh, suggested a basement unit and, uh, we actually went through the whole process and then request us to, uh, like, they put a provision to keep two parking spaces, uh, to preserve open space. Um, we just wanted to, to see if we could receive an, um, like, an explanation regarding this because we want to confirm that you want us to preserve the two parking, uh, spaces in the future at the rear of one-thirty-one Street. Once we develop one-thirty-three, uh, Devon Street parcel, the one-thirty-one Devon, uh, parcel does not currently have any parking spaces. However, our intent is to provide four tender parking spaces at the rear of one-thirty-one parcel to be accessed from the one-thirty-three parcels, one with, once we develop the one-thirty-three parcels. One-thirty-three Street, Devon Street is a separate project. It is under a separate permit, has to go through, uh, the CBA process again. If, if so, we, uh, we can commit to preserve these two parking tender spaces as an obvious space of the one-thirty-one parcel.
Caroline, would you like to, uh, weigh in on this just to make sure we're clear?
Yeah, um, so the petitioner has technically two projects at one-thirty-one Devon Street and one-thirty-three Devon Street. During the presentation, um, they had commented on the parking in reference to one-thirty-three Devon Street. However, the board interpreted that as one-thirty-one Devon Street. So for one-thirty-one Devon Street, there is no parking at all. Um, so the proviso that was added is technically in anticipation of one-thirty-three Devon Street. So again, one-thirty-one Devon Street has zero parking. Um, however, we made a proviso to reduce parking to two spaces, if that makes sense.
So the recommendation is to, to remove the proviso?
Correct. And then when one-thirty-three Devon Street does come before the board, then the board may add a proviso in reference to the parking.
To one-thirty-three Devon.
Right.
Any questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to remove the proviso, um, one-thirty-one Devon Street, um, regarding parking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
We'll begin with the hearing scheduled for nine thirty a.m. We'll start with case BOA one-six-one-four-three-zero-one with the address of three Arbor View Road.
Sorry, were there any, um, requests for deferrals or withdrawals?
Request for deferrals or withdrawals from this timeframe.
Yes, Mr. Secretary, eighty G Street, please.
That would be for a BOA one-six-three-four-seven-six-four with the address of eighty G Street. Would you go ahead and please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams and Maranti, business address of one-sixty-eight H Street, first floor, South Boston. Um, here requesting a deferral. Um, as we've submitted revised plans, um, approximately about four weeks ago, and still yet, the plans examiner has not reviewed or stamped them and sent them back. Uh, so we're gonna ask for a deferral to continue to allow the plans examiner to review that set, um, given the fact that we did make changes from the abutters meeting based upon what we heard from the neighbors, as well as reading what we read through the planning department's recommendation. Uh, we feel that this new revised set will satisfy a lot of those conditions that were mentioned. So again, uh, just looking for a short defer, allow the plans examiner to send those revised plans back over.
Are you looking at December or January?
It's, uh, I'm gonna have to defer. I, I, I would prefer a December date, uh, because again, they've been, they were sent back close to around four weeks ago. I just don't know what the timeframe is of getting the plans examiner to send those back, but I would prefer a December date.
Okay, Caroline?
We can do December third or December tenth.
I would say let's, let's schedule it for December tenth, um, just to allow, you know, ample time to, for the plans examiner to get back and hopefully they're, they're back in time.
May I have a motion?
I make a motion to defer to December the tenth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, two to four Kenton Road for a deferral.
Who? Two to fourteen. Right above, right above eighty G.
So that would be for case BOA one-five-eight-four-two-five-three with the address of two to fourteen Kenton Road. Would you go ahead and explain to the board? But.
Uh, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, members of the board. Attorney Timothy Fraser from the law firm, Dean Torby, one-seventy-five Federal Street, uh, seeking a deferral for two to four Kenton Road. Um, uh, I, I am a newly added counsel, um, to this project. Uh, we have some additional work to do, um, with some abutters in the community, so requesting a deferral. Um, I think maybe end of January will give us time to get through the holiday season. We accommodate some folks' schedules if the board is amenable to grant the extension for.
Thank you. Caroline?
Um, we could do January fourteenth, or would you prefer later?
Maybe look towards the end of January?
Sure, we have January twenty-eighth. Are you in February fourth?
Uh, January twenty-eighth.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to January twenty-eighth.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Chair, thank you, members of the board. Happy Thanksgiving.
Hearing no further request for withdrawals or withdrawals from nine thirty. We'll, um, begin with, go back to the beginning and begin with case BOA one-six-one-four-three-zero-one with the address of three Arbor View Road. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
And in the meantime, just a reminder, we are a six-member board. Do we know if the applicant is on?
Ryan, I'm unmuting you to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yeah, uh, I'm Ray Dunnett. Um, the owner of three Arbor View Road in Jamaica Plain. Um, we come forward to the board today to review and hopefully approve, um, refinishing our basement. Um, it's currently partially finished, um, but we're, um, going to redo the whole thing to, um, add a laundry, a clean laundry space and a music studio and a bathroom. And the plans, um, I guess are in the Google Drive.
I don't have the plans.
I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, we've gone through all of our neighborhood, um, our meetings and everything's been approved. Nobody's opposed the project.
Are we able to open his, um, plans?
Probably working on it right now.
Okay. In the meantime, are there questions? Why don't we take public testimony and circle back when you're able to open the plans? Is there any? Yep, go ahead.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I am the Jamaica Plain, uh, community engagement specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. Uh, the applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on July seventeenth. Uh, with Noah Abutters in attendance, uh, the proponent then performed, uh, present to two civics, uh, groups, one with Jamaica Hills Association, uh, and another with Jamaica Plains and Neighborhood Council, both voted and approved unanimously. Uh, thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Okay, well, uh, do the board members, uh, feel the need to look at the, copy, uh, plans before making a motion since it looks like there's some trouble opening it?
I've seen them, Madam Chair, and I'm, I'm okay with them.
Okay, uh, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Uh, yes, the additional floor area is within the footprint of the dwelling and the work is pretty de minimis with the deck, so yes.
Thank you. Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck and happy Thanksgiving.
Next, we go to case BOA one-six-four-nine-three-five-two with the address of thirty-four Rangeli Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher. Uh, I'm one of the principals of Six Eight Six Architects here today on behalf of the Passapara family. Um, the, uh, project before you is a single family, uh, which we will be constructing a rear one-story addition to extend living space. Um, uh, that, that's the existing site plan, and then here's the proposed site plan. I'm sorry, that's the existing, next, there you go. Uh, that shows the new roof as it's situated to the rear from the street. This building will not change. Um, we still have, we are maintaining a, uh, twenty-seven-foot, uh, rear yard setback, um, and the side yard setbacks remain as they exist today. Uh, there's no additional side yard change and no change to the front. Um, the additional house, uh, living space for the family and that's it.
Questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones. I'm with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. In regards to thirty-four Rangeli Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on ten sixteen, which was attended by three constituents, all of which expressed overwhelming support, uh, of the applicant and their proposal. Additionally, the applicant was in contact with Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association, which expressed awareness of the proposal and also that there was full community support. Therefore, they would not require a meeting and also wished the applicant luck in their process. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
Hello, Madam Chair, members of the board. Liam Ramus with Counter Fitzgerald's office. Our office would like to go on record in support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I see no additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
With that, may I have a motion?
Um, I'll put forward a motion of approval with, um, a proviso for a, uh, planning department design review with attention to screening and buffering, um, of the neighboring properties.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA one-six-two-five-zero-three-one with the address of twenty-six Lawrence Avenue. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case?
Good morning, uh, members, good morning, members of the board and, uh, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, my name is Rebecca Lee. I'm with Mince. I'm here with Jaclyn Manchester from Heading Home, a nonprofit organization, and Gabriella Shelburne, uh, the architect for this project. This involves the conversion of a long vacant, former rectory building, um, on Lawrence Avenue into, uh, a transitional, um, housing development with fifteen, um, bedrooms, nine units, um, and, um, related landscape improvements. Um, the proposed plans include the addition of, uh, egress from the third floor that'll be renovated to allow, um, uh, for fire access purposes outside the building. Uh, the renovations will also include, um, accessibility, uh, improvements because there's no accessible route to get into the building. Currently, there will be accessible bedrooms created, uh, which is a rarity in the emergency shelter system in the Commonwealth. The proponent, Heading Home, is the Commonwealth's largest provider of emergency shelter services and is, has a well-established track record for, um, well-run, um, and well-maintained properties. And, and this, the renovation of this building will bring it back into life as a residential structure, uh, and, uh, be an integral part of this neighborhood. Um, and, uh, there has been nothing but support for the conversion of this, as I said, long vacant structure into housing in this residential neighborhood. And we're happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Thank you. Uh, just confirming, the footprint is generally the same, correct? Just.
Yes, but, yeah. Yeah, but for the external improvements that are accessibility and fire egress related. Uh, there's also a storage shed being created, a separate storage shed being created.
Thank you.
Replacing an obsolete garage.
Questions from the board? Hearing done, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, this is Gabriella Shelburne, the architect. I, the, the number of bedrooms is seventeen, not fifteen.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, thank you for confirming.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process, which consisted of an abutters meeting held on October tenth. Although lightly attended, no community feedback was received at the meeting. Our next proponent met and presented to Faceden Street Residents Association Lawrence Avenue, where one resident voiced concerns, uh, no other opposition or support was received and the proposal was approved and moved forward. Thank you for your time in the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We'd like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
No raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'm, go ahead, Gaby.
Okay, sure. I'll, um, put forward a motion of approval with the proviso that plans be submitted to the planning department for design review with attention to the site plan and accessibility and the side or rear yard egress stair.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yeah.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Panado.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I just want to make sure that I got those provisos, uh, right, um, if I understand them, with attention to the site plan, accessibility, and the side yard stair.
Side rear egress stair?
Side yard rear egress stair, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, if, next, we go to case BOA one-six-six-zero-seven-three-four with the address of two-fifty-one to two-fifty-seven Washington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Ms. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago and Toscano with the business address of eleven Beacon Street, uh, here on behalf of Volney Capital, uh, the owner developer, and with me also have Chris Prudhomme, who you'll hear from when we get into the plans section of the presentation. He's the architect. Um, the, this project, uh, just to note, was an Article eighty, uh, project that was approved by the BPDA board back in June of twenty twenty-four at the board hearing. Uh, the proposal, and, and we're excited to bring this to the board as it's been, uh, in the works for a number of years. Um, the proposed project is to combine six separate parcels and erect a new four-story mixed-use group, uh, building with a small commercial space on the ground level, forty-eight residential rental units, and twenty-six parking spaces below grade. And, um, that commercial is on the first floor ground level. Um, just a little bit of background, and what you're looking at here is a rendering of the, of the approved board, uh, uh, building. Uh, this, my client owned a number of parcels in the area. Uh, they were an old junkyard and auto storage facility. Uh, there was obviously a push to see this area cleaned up and to create new housing. Uh, the Mayor's Office of Housing actually put up, put out an RFP because they owned a number of parcels in the area that have butted in my client's parcels. So we worked diligently with the Mayor's Office of Housing, uh, and, uh, to design the project to their liking and the community's liking, and also have, um, an increased affordability or at twenty-point-eight percent affordable on this project. Um, and we were able to be awarded the, the RFP for those parcels. Um, and so this is what the, the project that you're seeing today, uh, was a result of all that process. Um, if you go to the next slide, please, uh, Madam Ambassador. And so this is, uh, this just shows you, uh, the existing conditions, like an aerial view. Uh, you can see there is, uh, an auto body shop to the left. Uh, the site itself is an old storage facility for cars, but you can also see there are a number of, uh, of nice brick multifamily residential buildings and a number of residential buildings in and around that immediate area. Uh, next slide, please. And so these are just some of the existing conditions along Washington Street, uh, in this section of Dorchester. You can see the residential component with some commercial. It was also very important, as we worked with the Harvard Washington Norwell Neighborhood Association and through our Article 80 process, that we keep some commercial component on the ground level, uh, which is why we kept a small retail space in the building. Next slide, please. And again, this is just looking at Washington Street, um, on the corner. You can see where our project site is located, and you can go to the next slide. This, um, this building, and this is just showing some of the surrounding pictures. You can see, uh, some of the commercial that's around the area. Uh, the building will also have, uh, a lot of amenity space besides the retail space, uh, and parking. There would be a dedicated bike room, a rear communal patio that would also have a dog run, uh, for the residents of the building. There'll also be fitness center lounge and, um, front communal deck for the residents of the building. I just want to point out, uh, I had mentioned, we're at a twenty-point-eight percent affordability for inclusionary development on the project. That is a mix of housing stock of two bedrooms, one bedroom, a three-bedroom, uh, and a studio. So, it's a mix of all the units in the building, and, uh, the AMIs vary from some at thirty percent, uh, sixty, all the way up to seventy and eighty. So, we really tried to meet all of the criteria set by, uh, Mayor's Office of Housing as we went, uh, through this process. And, um, with that, if we go to the next slide, um, I'm going to turn it over to, to Chris Prudhomme. Um, I know Chris is on to go over the plans section.
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Uh, Chris Prudhomme, Zephyr Architects, 315 A Street. Um, this slide is just kind of highlighting the, uh, three city-owned parcels that kind of checkerboard with the three parcels that our client owns, uh, and which are being combined to, um, construct the proposed project that we have. Um, next slide, please. The next number of slides are just, uh, the, the drawings that have been presented, uh, to ISD as well as the board, uh, presenting a couple of renderings, uh, as well as our, our zoning summary. We are requesting a few variances regarding, uh, height, number of stories, um, the, uh, parking ratio, uh, as well as our rear yard setback. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is our proposed, uh, survey that kind of highlights how our building is being set into the property. Uh, the property does slope away towards the back of the, of the property. On the left side here, you have Washington Street. At the rear, um, there is, um, we are kind of abutting other, uh, residential structures. And to our left, uh, we have a similarly sized shaped lot, uh, that currently is a auto body shop, uh, with, uh, parking and some car storage in the rear. Um, so we're trying to take advantage of the space that we have. Uh, the, as you can see, the lot is sort of oddly shaped, especially at the rear, we have that angle. Um, one of the variances that we are requesting is that rear yard setback, which we have, uh, approximately sixteen feet, uh, three inches at the rear, at the shortest leg, at the bottom right corner, you can see. And as the back of the site kind of widens out, uh, it widens up to, uh, fifty-five feet almost. Uh, and this, the reason that we just squared off the building rather than, um, kind of angling to, to match that angle, uh, was at the request and per the comments, uh, during the design feedback that we had, uh, with Mayor's Office of Housing as well as the BPDA during the Article 80 process. Uh, next slide, please. Two drawings on the left show kind of our, our long, uh, elevations on either side, and we are just trying to show how the sloping site we are taking advantage of, uh, with our access to the, uh, the parking, which would be partially below grade, especially at street level. Uh, and on the other side would be, uh, direct pedestrian and bike path to, uh, access the buildings, uh, bike storage and other amenities space towards the rear of the property. Next slide, please. We have a kind of sort of a split-level situation here. So, as you enter in on the street level, which is the, um, plan to our left, uh, that portion of the, of the project at the top of the page, uh, is the kind of residential entry as well as retail space that we're trying to create. Uh, we've been in conversations with our neighborhood groups that we're, um, trying to establish exactly what the best suiting, uh, for the retail space is, whether whoever that, um, uh, tenant may be. Uh, but we're also trying to kind of create distinct delineation and privacy for the residences as they enter the space as well. Uh, the community is very adamant about wanting commercial space here, and we were hoping to create not only, uh, a nice place for the residents and the community at large to, to gather, but also utilize that front entry walkway to provide some outdoor seating as well, while still protecting it from the, um, the kind of busy vehicular access of, uh, of Washington Street. Uh, the plan on the right highlights our parking location, our parking kind of setup. Uh, there would be a direct access along a drive aisle on the left side of the building, uh, that enters in about halfway down. And we have twenty-six parking spaces here. Bottom right corner of the building highlights our, uh, eighty-eight parking, uh, for bike parking. Uh, because of the location within Dorchester, uh, we're trying to, uh, heavily weight this towards, uh, the, uh, MBTA and transit-oriented, uh, uh, options between the commuter station, that is only about two-tenths of a mile away, the parking, as well as the, um, as well as the bike parking and bus stops that occur right outside of our, our building as well. Uh, next slide, please. The next few slides are, are, are plans highlighting our, our layouts. We've gone through an extensive process with the Mayor's Office of Housing as well as the BPDA to kind of provide what we think are very, um, accommodating, nice, uh, units for the future tenants. Uh, as Jeff said, it's a mix of studios all the way up to three beds with ten affordable units and a mix of, uh, accessible as well. Uh, they range from about five-hundred-and-sixty square feet for the studio all the way up to, um, some of the larger three-bedroom units at twelve and thirteen-hundred square feet. Next slide, please. Uh, this is level three and four. Level four, we have stepped back, uh, from the front and rear of the, of the kind of footprint of the floors below. Uh, this is in an effort to kind of further delineate our, um, data line of the three stories that will match our adjacent properties. Uh, and the fourth floor is being set back, is less visible, provides a little bit of, uh, uh, like, protection for those, those visitors, as well as we are able to utilize that outdoor space for our common deck lounge and, and fitness center at the fourth-story front of the building. Next slide, please. Uh, at our roof, we are proposing to have, um, our mechanical element hidden up there so that we can, uh, provide as much ground floor space as we can, uh, especially outdoor space for tenants uh, and future vaultake, uh, photovoltaics to be installed. Next slide, please. Um, and once again, the next couple of slides are, are just our elevations to kind of highlight our, um, the levels we have, the overall height, which we are at, uh, of forty-three feet, which is another one of the, the variances that we are requesting. But we have taken steps to try to minimize its appearance and overall, um, scale relative to our neighbors. We are trying to hold at the front of the building specifically, uh, more of a three-story appearance. Uh, as you can see on the lower front elevation here, uh, our neighbors to the right and, uh, almost two to three blocks further down to the right, as you continue, those are all three-story masonry structures, uh, that are residential. We're trying to kind of capitalize and, and blend in with those structures. Uh, next slide, please. Other side and, and rear of the property kind of matching those elevations. Next slide. Uh, and here we just have a section kind of demonstrating how the, how the floors will match, how our garage is set into the, uh, the sloping side, uh, site so that we were able to hide and contain all of the parking so it is not visible from the street, and we don't have any parking on the exterior of the building. Uh, and the next slide is just our kind of final rendering to display what we're hoping that this building will look like, um, matching the kind of brick masonry facades of our neighbors to our right and really trying to provide a nice space for the tenants and the, something that the community can be proud of. Uh, I appreciate you taking the time. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
No, nice to see the addition of street trees along that side of the, the street.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Um, I think on some of the reassessors, um, images that were in our packet, it showed, um, there is an existing building on site, but I couldn't quite tell on the survey or in Google Maps. Is there, is it completely vacant? Is it improved with any buildings or structures?
There are no, um, current structures on the, I, I take that back. There's, there's a bit of a shed that is kind of falling down. There's no permanent structures that are of, of use to any, um, kind of future proponents of, of the land. So, uh, there is a structure, though it is not in any condition that would justify keeping it.
Okay, thank you.
There's an auto body shop next door, Ms. Weewell, so sometimes it almost looks like that could be part of it because we have so many of the parcels around it.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you. May we have a public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office is to defer to the judgment of this board. Some back information on the community process, this went through a BPDA-led process, a small project review involving a public meeting, uh, in April of 2024. Eventually, they were board-approved by the BPDA Board in, uh, June 13th.
Wow, I want to see.
Um, our office is, uh, unaware of any concerns beyond, uh, the Civic Association. I guess some abudders had raised concerns regarding, um, the size of the driveway, um, and how it leads out to Washington Street. Uh, they felt that that might be unsafe, uh, with high traffic conditions on Washington Street, and also expressed concerns about the width of the driveway. Um, I don't believe the Civic ended up taking a final vote on it, uh, but the applicant had presented, uh, over the summer. Uh, that Civic is Harvard Washington Norwell Neighborhood Association. Uh, but I understand that, um, other parts of the Civic were excited about, um, units being added. Uh, with that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Unmute you to speak, Taria?
Yeah, I'm muted. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, good morning. My name is Tiara Satchville. I am a Development Officer with the Mayor's Office of Housing. Um, this project involves the disposition of city-owned land, and Moehlich wants to go on record supporting the project. Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll, um, put forward a motion of approval. I'm happy to see the increased affordability in this project, and I think it's an appropriate use for these underutilized parcels as they exist today.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Norm, you're on mute.
Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
No, no worries.
Um, we have case BOA 158-4089 with the address of 19 Midland Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case through the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Uh, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is James Christopher, one of the principals of 686 Architects with the business address 10 Forbes Road in Braintree, Mass. I'm here today on behalf of Ann Hrom, uh, the owner of 19 Midland Street. Um, the proposal before you today is to construct a rear and side addition, uh, to the existing single-family home, uh, and, uh, change the occupancy to three residential units. Um, we are seeking relief for the use, the FAR, the height and feet and stories, the front yard being insufficient, side yard and rear yard. Um, next slide, please. Um, this is the site plan, which shows the proposed additions. Uh, we'll be constructing addition on the right side of the house along the driveway, which still results in, uh, results in an eleven, uh, and a half-foot side yard setback on that side. Uh, and then we would be constructing the rear addition, which results in a, uh, ten-foot, uh, ten-point-two-foot rear yard setback with parking, uh, underneath and then partially exposed in the rear for three spots. And then on the bottom of this plan, you see that little, uh, additional addition, which is to house the stairwell. Uh, next slide. Um, as we get into the floor plans, the, uh, the, the basement will remain, um, mechanical with storage space. Um, units one, two, and three would be two-bed, two-bath units, uh, for the first, second, and third floors. Um, all, uh, three units will be fully sprinkled and, and, uh, energy efficient. Um, we did have, uh, as we went through the community process, the addition to the rear is a little bit larger. We, we recessed that to, uh, try to, uh, work with the, um, abudders to the rear. Um, and then the, uh, next slide, please. Oh, these are the existing plans. We can go down to the proposed drawings. There you go. Uh, so this, this shows the, um, the first floor layout again. The basement, um, is, uh, mechanical and storage, no living space down there, the parking at grade. And they'll have green space to the rear and to the left of the building, um, and then the driveway on the right side. Next slide, please. The second and third, uh, floors are floor-through, uh, each individual floor-through units. Next slide, please. The, this is our roof plan, which shows the, uh, change to the addition of the roof in the rear. Um, there's no change to the height at the front of the building. Next slide, please. So, we would add the mansard roof, and, um, the cantilever parking is illustrated to the rear here. Next slide. And then these are just the reciprocating elevations. With the bottom elevation, um, that is the, uh, proposed new stairwell. Next slide, please. I believe that's it. With that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Questions from the board?
Uh, can you speak to the, uh, floor plate of this building as it relates to the, the other buildings on the street? Sort of how it fits into the other, um, adjacent properties on the street?
Sure. Um, actually, several buildings, uh, directly in this area have recently been added on to, uh, I did a project across the street at 18 Midland Street where we did something very similar, where we added on to the rear property, added on to the rear, and then the third story. Uh, the building abutting that has had a similar addition. Um, we, I don't know exactly what the square footage is of the other buildings, but I believe that the open space that remains on this side is comparable to the, to the balance of the buildings that remain.
Madam Chair, um, if Mr. Hampton or someone from the planning department is available?
What's your question? Is Mr. Hampton?
I'm sorry, my question is in regard to their recommendation.
Mr. Hampton?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston's planning partner. Uh, while we are in support of the addition of a third unit, we think that's appropriate. We think that the, uh, the addition to three of the four sides of a building is, uh, just too big. Um, we would like to see new plans submitted that show a smaller addition. Um, but we are in support of the third unit, but I don't know if design review would help this because it. because just our concerns are that the amassing of it is so large that we don't know if we can work with this one. So we would ask for a denial without prejudice so that new plans could be submitted for smaller additions. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, looking at a Google Earth image of the existing buildings, I mean, the existing building today looks pretty much lined up with the existing properties on that street. So an addition being proposed would be significantly more than what exists today. So I'm not really seeing how that new addition fits.
Correctly, I was stated at 18 Midland Street. I did a very similar project. The building next door to that has a very similar makeup. I believe that we could work with the BPDA on design review. I'd hate to have to refile this project and have my client go through another year worth of review and cost and community process when there's an agreement that this is an appropriate building, except that maybe the additions are too large. I'm happy to work with the BPDA on design review, but I'll follow the board's recommendation.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
To the applicant, could you give us the unit sizes? And the reason I ask is because the floor area is increasing quite a bit, almost, you know, double. What is the max... More than double, what is the maximum allowed in this district? So just to put it into context.
I don't know if I have the unit floor plans broken down, the square footage broken down on my plans. I can certainly provide that information. Sorry. Unit one is 1,400 square feet. Unit two is 2,010 square feet. Unit three is 23,300 square feet.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 19 Midland Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in a abutters meeting held on 4/18/24, which was attended by three constituents. The primary feedback... The primary feedback from this meeting was that there were several concerns, citing size, density, and especially the balconies on the side of the building, which the director of abutters had the most concerns about, the loss of privacy. Some community members also expressed support, citing it was a good project, and they were happy that it included parking. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association, which convened on 7/9 and 8/13, respectively. The association has expressed opposition regarding the proposal, noting its excessive height and size and stories in violation of side, front, and rear setbacks, which negatively affect the abutters and the streetscape. Ultimately, Columbia Seven Hill has voted five in support and eighteen in opposition, and the proposal... And the Civic Association has also provided a letter in opposition. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
S.J. George? You're unmuted.
This is Stephen George from 16 Maryland Street. I'm a direct abider to the rear of 19 Maryland Street. I also own 14 Maryland Street, which is a direct abider to the rear of 19 Midland Street. Typically, I'm in favor of development in the Dorchester neighborhood 95% of the time, but I'm opposed to this project on 19 Midland Street. Proposal is excessive for the Seven Hill neighborhood to put. The 2,000-square-foot apartments proposed result in the square footage almost being tripled, in the same floor area ratio almost being tripled. Project eliminates the most all-useable green space. I'm not sure of the need for 2,000-square-foot apartments when the average apartment size in the neighborhood, median neighborhood, is about 1,000 square feet. During the abutters meeting, I asked the rear setback or rear yard be maintained at the existing 28 feet. 30 feet is required. The rear yards in 16 Maryland Street is actively used by families. Most of the rear yards of Midland Street and Maryland Street are actively used by families due to the... Really, the only usable green space for the properties. My rear yard... Excuse me. My rear yard receives morning sun with the current shadow line at the property line. Any decrease of the rear setback or increase in the height would move the shadow line, morning sun would be eliminated for my rear yard of the current proposal. It is mentioned in the local civic group, Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association, ordering against approval of the project. Members of the board, in summary, I would support the project if the rear yard setback in green space is maintained as it is now. This would be consistent with the other houses on Midland Street and Maryland Street. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Christine?
Hi, thank you so much for your time. My name is Christine Hoag. I live at 210 Seven Hill Avenue. I'm the Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association Planning Board Chair, and I'm here to express our opposition, as has been expressed. And I'd like to say that while we do support affordable housing, increased housing in our area, we welcome development in general. This project is, as has been expressed by the BPDA, excessive for the lot size for the street. And while some projects, as you know, James noted, have been already completed, those were intended as an anomaly, not necessarily as what should be considered standard for the street. And, you know, we very much appreciate a smaller, more appropriate project. Thank you for your time.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
Any comments from the applicant before we proceed briefly?
Again, I'm happy to work with the BPDA on design review. I feel that the side yard setback is compliant on the right. The front yard setback is existing on the front. We only incrementally increase it on the left to accommodate a stairwell. And the rear yard setback is at 10 feet now, which we could certainly work with the BPDA to relocate the stairwell and the side yard setback without having to go through a yellow, re-filing at the expense of my client and re-review with the community process and the Civic Association. But again, I would leave that to the discretion of the board.
Thank you. Any... May I have a motion?
Yeah, I think this is excessive, and I propose a motion to deny without prejudice. I think it needs... It's reworking.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes, I think that two-foot side setback, the increase in paving and amassing all need to be worked on before it comes back to the board.
Yeah.
Mr. Collins?
None of those is on.
Sorry, yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Next, we have case BOA 1649728 with the address of 39 Nazing Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm not sure my client is present, but I'm...
I'm going to make them a panelist right now.
Okay.
All set.
Okay. Again, like I said, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jonah Manigat. I'm an architect representing the client from 39 Nazing Street. This project is a street fore project. Our client had a rear deck, a current rear deck on the back of the building, where it's been proven difficult for them to move furniture up and down to the third floor and maybe even the second floor. So they're now looking to expand the rear deck, allowing more access to the rear doors for furniture movement, and also maybe expand the deck a little bit more for leisure. So they have... We have submitted those drawings, and they have been cited for both rear and side yard violations. So we are here... These will be open-air decks. They will not be covered. So we are here to ask the board for relief on those two violations.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair and members of the board, for the record, my name is Jeremy Bembry. I'm the Roxbury Community Engagement Specialist for the Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has completed the community process. Our office did not recognize this to require a full community process, and therefore, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services notification was distributed. With no community feedback received, they then met with Sonoma, Maple, Schuler Civic, where they were approved to move forward. Thank you for your time. And the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services would like to defer to the board with their judgment.
Thank you.
No additional raised hands, Madam Chair.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Yeah.
The next two cases have been deferred. I'll take those two, case BOA 1654962 with the address of 21-35 West Second Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, attorney Nix, Zula, McDermott, Quilty, Miller, and Hanley, 28 State Street in Boston. I think Madam Ambassador, there you go, thank you. The first page, actually, if you could scroll up quickly, Madam Ambassador. Yeah, very quickly. Here on behalf of Zero Athens LLC and Transom, who's the owner and property of this newly constructed building, which you'll see in the next slide, at 21-35 West Second Street in South Boston, and their proposed new ground-floor tenant, Format, which is a locally and women-owned boutique fitness operator. With me today from Format is Talia Bardell, who's the studio co-founder and lead instructor. Now, next slide, please, Madam Ambassador. Thank you. As I mentioned, this is a newly constructed building at 21-35 West Second. You can see it on the screen here. It's in South Boston's West Broadway neighborhood. It's near the Broadway Red Line MBTA station between Athens and West Second. The overall project was for a six-story building, 55 residential units, and at the time, just one commercial core space, which was approved by the board in 2019 and was constructed in 2023. Next slide. So they've come back to the board now as they have found a tenant for that commercial core space, which was approved a few years ago. They've worked diligently to find a tenant that fits in the neighborhood for this ground-floor retail space. And as I had mentioned, they now have Format Fitness, who's looking to occupy a little under 2,400 square feet of ground-floor commercial space at the recently built building. Next slide, please. Just a little bit about Talia and Format. Format's a women-owned fitness boutique operator. They do have a location in the North End at 420 Commercial Street. This would be their second location. They are specialized fitness instruction. They run bar, HIIT, and strength classes. Next slide, please. This is just to show some images and a type of mood board, you know, of design inspiration for the space at this location. Next slide. Just to show the ground-floor plan, architectural floor plans of the space, the ground floor of the building, similar to what was shown earlier in the space they will be occupying. Next slide. Again, just a more detailed floor plan showing the interior breakdown of the lobby space and the studio space. And next slide, which I believe is the last one. Yep, so this is the refusal letter. We are in the multifamily residential local services zoning sub-district. A fitness gym use is forbidden at this location. However, the application did receive a planning department recommendation of approval. This project would allow, you know, a new small business to open near one of South Boston's commercial hubs at Broadway Station. There are a ton of small, similar businesses, restaurants, banks, convenience stores, and actually, a few others similarly focused and specialized fitness centers. So this would really... Although it needs a use variance, this would really fit right in the neighborhood and help activate that ground-floor space. And finally, I'll just note, which I'm sure the mayor's office will note, we did have in the abutter meeting on October 9th, we did have outreach to the West Broadway Neighborhood Association, and there was no issues during the process. So happy to stop here, Madam Chair, and if there's any questions, we can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner completed the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on October 9th. The proponents additionally coordinated with the West Broadway Neighborhood Association. Neither meeting resulted in any concerns being expressed. And with that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Most new approve.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1629405 with the address of 204 to 204A Hanover Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dennis Quilty, attorney at McDermott Quilty, Miller, and Hanley, representing the property owner, Richard and Adriana Travlioni, who are the owners of the building at 204-204A Hanover Street, seeking before you today to renovate the building and seek permission for a change from the retail use at the ground level to a restaurant use. I think, and I don't have the full history on this, my understanding is that a similar application was actually before the ZBA back in 2016 or '17, by a previous owner of the property. Our belief is that that was approved and never followed through on. So the use was never changed. The building's been vacant for some time. Mr. Travlioni and his wife own another restaurant in the neighborhood, Giacomo's. They seek to create a new fish-themed restaurant at this site to be called the North End Lobster Company and to renovate the space upstairs for residential units. There are existing residential in the building. He seeks to create four studio apartments in place of two apartments that are on the upper floors presently and to change the retail space into restaurant. Excuse me. We had an ONS abutters meeting on September 25th. We met with and received the support of the North End Waterfront Neighborhood Council on September 9th. We met with North End waterfront residents on September 12th and received a motion of non-opposition for the use. We are happy to take any of your questions here this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 204 Hanover Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including in an abutters meeting on 9/25, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback of this meeting was some concerns about elderly abutters who owned the units next to them, that they would be bothered by loud condensing units from the air conditioners from this property and additionally, another property that's being built on the other side of their apartment. The proposal was reviewed with Neera and Munich, which convened on 9/12 and 9/9, respectively. The associations have expressed non-opposition regarding the proposal, and at this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Counselor Colletti's office. At this time, the council would like to go on support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Chair, see no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I think I'm over to approve. Do you need a design review?
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yep.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1612807, with the address of 31 Cambridge Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Patrick Sweeney. I'm an attorney at 261 Main Street, Charleston. I'm here representing Jack Kelly, the owner, sole owner of Charleston Cannabis LLC. Members of the board, this location, 31 Cambridge Street, was previously before the board and approved on August 31, 2021. Mr. Kelly was a majority shareholder in that corporation. However, since that time, there have been changes in the corporation, which necessitated us coming back before the board, because the approval as a conditional use terminated when the prior corporation did not move forward. We were unable to move forward with the prior corporation as a result of the instruction of the CCC. So we're here back before you again on the same place, same plans. The only change is that Mr. Kelly individually is the sole owner of the corporation. This project and this establishment was approved for license by the Boston Cannabis Board on October 9, 2024. On October 22nd, a host community agreement was entered into between the city and Charleston Cannabis. We have had a community meeting that was well-attended and with great support on August 9, 2024. City Councilor Gabriella Collazza Bahada, Representative Dan Ryan, and State Senator Sal D. Domenico have all gone on record supporting this project. Additionally, the Friends of Sullivan Square, a civic association in that area, as well as local VFW, and Turned Around, a Charleston youth organization sponsored by Mass General Hospital, are all in support. The issue is the fact that we're within the quote-unquote buffer zone. We're approximately 1,500 feet from another establishment. That establishment is wholly different than this proposed use. That establishment has some 17 points of sale off its delivery. Charleston Cannabis at 31 Cambridge Street will have four points of sale and will not offer delivery. It's been termed a boutique retail establishment. Jack Kelly, who is here with me, is a lifelong resident of Charleston, who has gone to great lengths to get the support and input of his community in order to bring this to fruition. I myself am personally familiar with this commercial unit, having done the condo docs many, many years ago, and representative the prior owner. I can tell you, this property has sat vacant for over 24 years. It was last used as a restaurant. The owners were unable to locate other uses. They did sell it a few years back. They blew it was three, and the new owner, Rise Development, has agreed to lease to Mr. Kelly. I believe that all of the requirements for conditional use are met here, and we are available to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Just a quick question on the other establishment. Was that approved before or after your prior approval?
Well, it was the first iteration of this that was approved in 2021 came before the other establishment. Now that we had to reapply because of the restructuring of the corporation, we're actually behind the other. But the support that I've talked about has been for this version of a retail recreational cannabis establishment at 31 Cambridge Street.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Can you speak to the building itself? It seems there are residential units above you, and there were some comments about distinguishing entryways and such. So if you could address that, that would be great.
Madam Chair, that came up at the Boston Cannabis Board meeting. There are residential condominiums located above. They have a separate entrance, separate and distinct from the entrance to Charleston Cannabis. And if we want on the plan, I can identify that. The entrance to the retail establishment is, if you will, on the turn. It's directly on the corner. The entrance to the residence up above is more along Cambridge Street, closer to what was the Teamsters Health Center. So it is separate and distinct, and we provided additional plans, photographs, and the like to BCB to address that very issue with them, because they had the same questions, ma'am.
Thank you. With that, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office from Neighborhood Services. At this time, Mayor's Office defer to the judgment of this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, ONS had hosted a community meeting in early August. It was well-attended. Those in attendance spoke overwhelmingly in support of the proposal. We received letters of support, including but not limited to the Charleston Coalition, Sullivan Square Residents Association, State Rep. Danny Ryan, the Abraham Lincoln Post, as well as Counselor Colletti's office. As you may reference, there is letters of opposition from a direct abutter who lives in the building, expressing concerns regarding safety, the proximity of the proposal to their residential unit, as well as the buffer zone conflict. With that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Power from Counselor Colletti's office. The council has submitted a letter in support to this project, and additionally, she would like to go on repaying strong support of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. Okay. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Next, we have case BOA 1660706, with the address of 531 Bennington Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge, and good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lynch, the business address at 245 Sumner Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, JB Capital. We could advance the slide down to maybe slide five of that? Perfect start point here. So, Madam Chair and members of the board, this is the former site of a pre-existing three-family dwelling. The building itself was structurally compromised and recently demolished. In connection with the repermitting for the site and the advent of new zoning for East Boston, this is now in the EBR4 zoning district. So we proposed a new design of our building that would be fully compliant dimensionally and with respect to use for EBR4. So we are proposing a new five-unit, four-story structure. We can jump down a few more slides. We can get into the site plan. I believe it's slide 10. And as a result, we were cited by ISD for two items under the new amended zoning. The first item was insufficient off-street parking, and the second was lot coverage was exceeded. Under the new EBR4 zoning, you can have a maximum of 60% lot coverage. We are actually below the 60%, and I believe the Boston Planning Department's recommendation recognized this as perhaps an erroneous interpretation of a lot coverage requirement. Our building is somewhere around, I believe, 46% or 47% for lot coverage. You do not count the rear stairs, which we can see here on the site plan, and everything else with respect to the dimensions of our building either comply or are recognized as a pre-existing condition that was allowed from the other, from the prior building. With respect to parking, again, this was a pre-existing three-unit dwelling with no parking. If we had proposed or were able to keep the existing structure, we would only be required to add two parking spaces with the change of use and occupancy. This site, as we saw on the previous view, is on the main drag in East Boston, which is Bennington Street. It is actually divided, I don't want to call it a highway, but it is 145. It presents certainly a safety issue with respect to off-street parking for vehicles either backing out or accessing Bennington Street from a driveway to the site. So I believe the Planning Department has also recommended that parking variance would be appropriate based upon the number of spaces that would ultimately be required in the requests that we're making. Other than that, this is, as I mentioned, fully compliant with new zoning, and I believe the Planning Department has recommended approval for this. If we can jump down to the next slide, please. So we do show our existing demolition and proposed plan. We do have space in the lower level. I get to that in a second when I show you the elevations. But the height of Bennington Street to the rear of the property allows for a full lockout condition, so this lowest level would actually be available for habitable space. We're not located in the coastal flood resiliency overlay district or a flood zone, so there are no resiliency issues associated with this site. Next slide, please. As we move up the building, these are actually probably pretty easy to jump to the elevations. We can jump down to slide, I believe it's 17. So we show our existing conditions, or it's a previously existing conditions of a building that was on the site previously. And as you can see, it was a three-story structure with that full lockout condition towards the rear. Next slide, please. Our proposed building would be essentially the same footprint that existed previously. We do add that fourth level, which is allowed under the new zoning, and is within the height limit. And we do have that continued lockout condition to the rear. And you can see the rear egress stairs that are included. And again, those do, that does not count towards building depth or total building lot coverage. Next slide, please. Just our rear view and our right side view, again, similar conditions. We can see that lockout at the lowest level. Next slide, please. And then our proposed conditions for both the rear and the right side. We do set that fourth level back slightly. Next slide, please. We do have two options for elevations. We did try to maintain some of that language for the triple decker, and that's one of the reasons why the architect has set back that fourth level. Again, there's no requirement for that fourth level to be set back, but in order to keep some of the rhythm for the existing triple deckers that do exist on this side of Bennington Street, that design approach was considered. I believe our next slide just shows a different color scheme, but these are the things that we discussed with the neighborhood as to some different ideas for color. So with that, again, just reiterate, this is essentially designed to be compliant with new zoning. We believe the interpretation of the Inspection Service Department regarding block coverage was in error. The only relief that is necessary for this project will be the off-street parking for the additional proposed units. I will pause. They are answering questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 531 Bennington Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on 9/26, which was attended by 10 constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was parking concerns, construction waste, and rodent control. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Civic Association, which was hard review in that area, which convened on November 6th and November 4th respectively. The association has expressed opposition regarding the proposal, and the vote was 10 yes to 16 no. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's judgment. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment. With that, may I have a motion?
I think a motion to approve.
There a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much, and have a great Thanksgiving.
You too. With that, we'll be back at 11 o'clock. See you then. You too. With that, we'll be back at 11 o'clock. See you then.
In progress.
Okay, let's do a quick roll call again. Mr. Stembridge? I'll keep going. Mr. Langham?
Present.
Ms. Weewell?
Present.
Mr. Collins?
Present.
Ms. Panado?
Present.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just a reminder that we are a six-member board. Mr. Stembridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And along with that, we'll ask if at this time there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the 11 o'clock conference?
Yes, Mr. Stembridge, 3-17 Lothrup Street or 22.
So that would be for case BOA 1663235 with the address of 3-17 Lothrup Street. Would you go ahead and turn your...
Thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. Turning Jeff Drago with Drago in discussion with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Just by way of background, we made minor changes to this project. We were prepared to move forward, had worked on all of our community support, but we submitted the plans over three weeks ago. The plan's examiner still has not reviewed them and is out of the office today. And even though we were prepared to move forward, we were asked that we had to take administrative deferral. And I would please ask if we could get an earlier date because we are talking about everything.
Thank you. Caroline?
We can do December 3rd or December 10th?
Just in case, Caroline, thank you, December 10th would probably be better.
Okay, thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to defer till December the 10th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much. Any further requests for withdrawals or deferrals from this conference?
Yes, Mr. Secretary, 58 Baxter Street.
58, please. So that would be for case BOA 1649361 with the address of 58 Baxter Street. You go ahead and explain, please?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. J. H. Christopher, 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forests Road. Requesting a very brief deferral so that ISD may complete the review of the revised plans. They were filed with adequate time, and after several attempts to contact, the plan's examiner unsuccessfully, we are requesting administrative deferral so that he may finish the re-review.
Thank you, Caroline.
We can do December 3rd or January 14th?
No more 10th?
No.
But the last one could have been 10th.
Do you have preference?
I guess January 14th.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to January 14th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
If there are no further requests...
I see a Mr. Chen with another raised hand. Can you identify yourself and what address you're looking to defer?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Jim Chen, representing the client for 8 Hudson Street. We would like to defer our hearing to a next available hearing, possibly due to some administrative issue that we need to take care of.
Okay. Caroline?
We can do December 3rd or January 14th?
January 14th, please.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Did you read into the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Sorry, Mr. Stembridge.
I was gonna... Thank you. I was gonna remark.
Thank you all.
That was, that is, this is for case BOA 1622743 with the address of 8 to 8A Hudson Street.
Okay.
The date is?
January 14th.
14th. May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to January 14th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
Further requests for withdrawals and deferrals from this conference? If not, then we...
So there's the raised hand. Andrew, are you looking to...
Mess on gear, yeah?
Okay, go ahead.
Are you seeking a deferral, sir?
No, ma'am. I'm looking to be heard today.
Okay, so you're, okay, so let's proceed then, Mr. Stembridge.
Okay. We will return then to case BOA 1607637 with the address of 65 R Ren Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Applicant, one is Zangief, are you on? Or the attorney? See no raised hand at the moment.
Then I guess we'll return to them, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The applicant is present for 65 Ren Street?
Okay, please proceed.
Good afternoon, good morning, members of the board. We are here to ask relief for the construction of a renovated and altered garage. There are two violations which require remedy. The first is building height excessive, and the second is rear yard insufficient. A second ago, we had the site plan up on the board, and you can see from the site plan, if we can put it up again, that the rear yard is actually the extension of an existing non-conforming rear yard setback. If you go up to the site plan, please, the site plan, where is it? All right, there it is, there it is. Keep going, please. Okay, perfect. So we're dealing with a garage, which is almost a lot of a two-family dwelling in West Roxbury. The existing garage is 5.8 feet off the rear yard, and we're making the new garage about three feet wider. So the rear yard violation is the extension of an existing non-conforming condition. In regards to building height, we are, we have a top of ridge of 21 feet 6 inches off flat grade. I could not find where that height was limited, but it's approximately 12 to 13 inches higher than the existing ridge on the existing garage, which we would tear down and rebuild as per the plot plan. We feel that there is no impact to the community from this alteration and slight enlargement, and we would ask the board to grant relief for the two items needed.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Siggy Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. His proponent has completed the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on the 25th of September, at which numerous abutters alleged that they believed the office space would be used in a commercial manner for a business owned by the proponent. It is not consistent with the residential character of the area. No other concerns were raised. Proposal was presented to the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council, which is supportive. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1660063 with the address of 36 Newport Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair, excuse me, members of the board. Excuse me. My name is James Christopher. I'm one of the principals of 686 Architects with the business address of 10 Forests Road in Braintree. I am here today on behalf of the owners of 36 Newport Street.
I've got a balance.
The application is to, sorry, I'm just pulling up my plans here, to construct a rear addition to the existing multifamily home and change the occupancy to four residential units. We need some relief from the zoning board of appeals included in that, either the use itself, parking, the rear yard setback, and the side yard setbacks. You can go down to the proposed plans, please. Thank you. So this is the existing, the proposed site plan, which shows the proposed addition to the rear. We had originally proposed a much larger addition in five residential units. As we met with the community, their concerns about the rear yard setback and the overall height of the building allowed us to make the design revisions to drop a unit. We reduced the rear yard setback to increase some open space, and we kept the front portion of the building the same so that from the street, the front elevation remains, and the third-story addition happens to the rear of the building about midway through. If you go through the slides, please. That's our site use plan, which shows the, the site plan shows the four parking spaces as well as the open space around the site, which maintains a lot of green space. Next slide, please. The basement will be used as mechanical and storage. Unit one is a 995 square foot two-bedroom. Next slide. The second floor has, the second floor houses units two and three. Unit two is a 993 square foot two-bed, and unit three is a 696 square foot two-bed. And then unit four, which is on the third floor, is 1,125 square feet. If you go to the next slide, please, we can see the elevations. That's our roof plan. The front portion shows the existing roof line, and the top of the page is the rear, which shows the proposed addition. Next slide. So the, the top elevation here is the side elevation, which shows the open parking to the rear and the addition of the third story about midway through the building, which helps the front elevation read as it does now from the street and helps keep down the field the additional height. Next slide, please. That's our opposite sides and rear elevation. I think that's it. With that, I'll take any questions from the board.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Evan Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 36 Newport Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. The community process was conducted, including two abutters meetings held on 5/7 and 6/24/24, which was attended by several constituents in each meeting. The primary feedback from the first meeting was concerns over size and density as well as character of the neighborhood was a huge concern. After the meeting, the applicant took the community's concerns and made significant changes to the proposal, and the community feedback was more positive, but there were still concerns about design size, students that will be living in these units instead of families that would stay there and rodent activity due to construction. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with Columbia Seven Hill Civic Association on 7/9 and 8/13/24. The association expressed opposition regarding the proposal and noted its excessive size and height and stories and violation of side, front, and rear setbacks, which negatively affect the abutters and streetscape. Ultimately, Columbia Seven Hill has voted two in support and 21 opposed. The proposal also provided a letter of opposition to the proposal. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's decision. Thank you for your common consideration.
Madam Chair, we have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have case BOA 1650690 with the address of 165 D Street. If the applicant and/or their representative, Mr. Christopher, are available, would they please...
Mr. Secretary, thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, again, members of the board. James Christopher, 686 Architects, with the business address of 10 Forests Road in Braintree. Here tonight on behalf of Tony Patel, the owner of 165 D Street. The proposal before you is to erect a two-story addition to the existing single-story retail store. With that project, we need relief, including from the off-street parking requirement. There will be no parking. The front yard is required to have a setback of five feet. We are existing at the back of the sidewalk, which is modal. We are existing at the back of the sidewalk, which is modal and consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. The side yard, the rear yard is required to have a setback of 20 feet. We'll be decreasing that down to eight feet at the second and third levels. And then the side yard is required to be three feet. We'll be at 1 foot 10 and 1 foot 3. Those side yard setbacks are pre-existing non-conformances. And screening and buffering will do our best to design away during, as we work with approvals. Next slide, please. Go and, so that's our existing, sorry, I just have a lot of time seeing that. The, the proposed site plan. Next slide, please. This is the existing building. Keep going down to the A drawings, the proposed drawings, please. Okay, here we go. So the footprint of the basement and the store remains the same. The, we will add a residential entry to the right side of the building, and then the, the commercial, the retail space entry will remain in the center of the building. Next slide, please. Each of these units is a two-bedroom, one-bath unit with front-to-back living. It's the wide-open living space. Unit one is 344 square feet, and unit two is 500, I'm sorry, 544 square feet, and unit two is 538 square feet. Next slide, please. There are some rear balconies, just to create a little bit of outdoor space. And then we show that little overhang that happens at the rear of the property from the existing building. And then below to the rear will be open. Next slide, please. And then from the broadside elevation, there is an existing delivery door on the left side when facing. That will remain in place, and there will be no change to that access path. And then on the right is just the front elevation. Next slide. And here's our building section. I think that's it. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. The petitioner has completed the community process. Our office hosted an abutters meeting on August 28th, at which no concerns were raised about the design. There were two supporters. The only concern raised related to low ventilation machinery at the property. Proponents corresponded with the City Side Neighborhood Association, which expressed dawn opposition to the proposal. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is Vanessa Wu from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to go on record and support due to feedback from neighbors. He respectfully asks that the proponent continue to work with the community on any quality of life issues that may arise during the construction phase. Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Thank you. Mr. Hampton, can you just elaborate on your recommendation from the planning department, if you're available? Is Mr. Hampton with us still?
Yeah, my apologies, Madam Chair. We have, the squirrels are running the computers over here today. Bye-bye. So as you saw, again, Jeff Hampton, City Boston Planning Department. Our recommendation was denied without prejudice. Our issue with this is more with the extension of the two-story addition going a little farther than what is already there, and it's actually increasing a rear yard violation. The residential portion in the project itself, we're in favor of. This is more of a design with the extension out the back. I don't know if it's possible to bring that in. I know these units are smaller in size, but we're not, we're not opposed to the addition of the units nor the store. It's really going out the back and, you know, increasing the violation that already exists.
Do you see this as something that could be addressed through design review?
I would leave that up to the board. I don't see why we couldn't give it a shot. I don't want to go against what our recommendation is, but this seems like this could be done through design review.
Understood, thank you. Would the applicant like to...
Is the architect on for this one or no?
Yes.
Could the architect come to that?
That's us.
Yeah.
We're the architect.
Oh, could you respond to whether...
Yeah, absolutely. We've had projects like this in the past. We had the rear yard was a concern. We've worked with the BPD post-zoning board to make it something that was amenable to both parties. I, I think that we can, we can work with the BPDA to accommodate their desire to make this project approvable.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, Madam Chair, can someone confirm what the rear setback is? I'm seeing like some different language in the planning memo and the language on the agenda of what the rear setback is. And we didn't, I didn't see a proposed site plan with this either.
The...
The planning memo says it's three feet 10 inches.
Yeah, it's not that close. The, let me go to my recite plan. I'm not seeing my proposed site plan or my set either.
Ms. Weewell, is this something that can be addressed through a design review?
Um, perhaps. I just would like to know what that number is. Yeah, I'll table it for now, but it would just be nice to get the materials when we review them.
Agreed. May I have a motion? Are there other questions, or is someone ready to make a motion?
Well, what, what is the violation on the rear yard? Can you talk about, what's the violation on the rear yard?
If you hold on one sec, I have to pull up my drawings to look. I can't, it's the set that I have ready.
It's not, it's not on the front of the, the plans?
What's required, what's allowed, and would you...
Yeah, it's not being on the front of the plans, yeah.
Can you scroll back to that page that I think it had it right in front of us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wait, there's a typo on that page, because the existing says 7.9 and proposed is 7.9. So I need to look.
Okay, but the required is 20.
The required is 20.
That's to answer that question, Ms. Panado.
Okay. All right, I got you. So we don't know what's being proposed.
Madam Chair, I'll put forward a motion. I'm not comfortable approving this without knowing what that rear setback is.
I'm trying to find my set of plans right now.
All right.
Go ahead.
I would propose...
I think Kate did move forward, yeah.
I'm looking up denial without prejudice, just, um...
Can I, can I request a deferral?
That's up to the board. Does someone want to, do you want to change your motion to deferral or stick with DWAP? Ms. Weewell, or, yeah.
I... I'll entertain a deferral. Do we have dates?
We can do December 3rd, January 14th, January 28th, or February 4th.
December 3rd, I'll take December 3rd.
Okay, I will defer to December 3rd. And I, I will also be on that meeting, so I really want to see a better package of materials and dimensions and to confirm what is being requested in terms of the violation and confirmed by the design professionals.
Ma'am, a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
The next case has been deferred, so that takes us to case BOA 1606365, with the address of 372, 378 Boylston Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, is Julia or representative for this project on? Can you raise your hand? Okay, let's see. I'm going to make your panelist, Julia. Just have to press accept, and then you can unmute yourself when that happens. All right, Julia, now that you're a panelist, you can unmute yourself.
Oh, hi. How are you? Now I can, you can hear me now?
Yes, please proceed.
Okay. Okay, hi, my name is Julia Zayak. Good morning to all the board members. I am proposing to have a change of occupancy at 376. We needed to move our business, was previously at 581, and they are gutting the building, so we have now moved to 376. And we would like a change of occupancy to include body tattooing and particular permanent makeup.
Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Siggy Johnson at the Office of Neighborhood Services. The petitioner has completed the community process. Our office asked them to distribute an informational flyer in the area, which solicited no comments to our office. Proponents met with the Neighborhood Association of the Back Bay, which communicated a position of non-opposition. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a raised hand here. Crystal, are you looking to give a testimony here?
Hello.
Hi, can hear you.
Crystal Boeschman, on behalf of the Back Bay Association, 229 Berkeley Street. The Back Bay Association is not in favor of the proposed conditional use variance here for the particular purpose specified. We've been working closely to address the overall retail mix for that block and have been extremely cautious.
Thank you. And I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Sorry?
Hi, this is Sydney from Councilor Flynn's office. Councilor Flynn would like to record and support due to feedback from neighbors and non-opposition from the Neighborhood Association of Back Bay. He respectfully requests that the proponent continue to work closely with the neighbors on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you so much, everyone.
Next, we have case BOA 1643473, with the address of 129 to 131 Portland Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, will they explain the case to the board?
Oh, great. Sending a request to make you a panelist. You can just press accept, there you go. And once you're a panelist, you can unmute yourself. Yeah, you're on mute, great.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board. I'm here for, this is Greg McCarthy here for 129 Portland Street. What we are proposing here is we have an existing six-story building that has previously been used as office. Apparently, a vacant building. We are proposing to convert floors two through six to residential. We're proposing 25 units. Of those 25 units, four would be IDP units, and one would be a voucher unit. The ground level, we have proposed as retail. That was actually previously office, but at some point, it was most likely storefront. It has the, the design features of a, of a retail storefront area, so... The existing building works really well for a residential conversion. The lobby is already accessible. There's an elevator in place. We did have to add a second staircase to meet building code. So these are just the existing floor plans, if you wanted to... Move it through, this is the demo set. I think we get to one more page. Sorry, one more. Yeah, so the ground level is proposed to be broken up into three commercial spaces. The basement would have a bike road, 25 bike racks, and some accessory space for the commercial units, as well as the utilities and the infiltration system for the building, and some storage. Moving out, the building's actually stacked, so it's the same layout from floors two through six, which I can show you on the next page. Am I controlling this? I'm sorry.
No, you're not. You need to let the ambassador know what page you want to be on.
Okay, great, great. My apologies. Okay, so the, the next level has a pretty good unit mix, ranging from studios to three bedrooms, ranging in size from 500 to, I think around 1,000 square feet. If we keep going, a few more pages down. If we go one more up, I can show the site plan. So there's two entrances to the building. It sits on the corner of Valenti and Portland Street. The building's in impeccable shape on the exterior. It's a really beautiful building, so luckily, we don't have to do much exterior work. And the sidewalks are in good shape, too. We can keep going down to the next page. Is it just the existing elevation of the building, which will remain the same? This shows the side of the building. That is the... So to give a little more context on the project, we have applied to participate in the Office to Residential Conversion Program. So we've been working closely with the City of Boston on that. We were approved by the BPDA, I believe, in, in September or August. And we think it'd be a great project for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judge from this board. As you heard from the applicant's representation, this went through a BPDA-led community process involving a public meeting August 5th of 2024. Our office is unaware of any concerns at this time. With that, we'd like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, second raised hand here. Tony?
Hi, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Byes, on behalf of Councilor Sharon Durkin. She would like to read, help me read this statement this morning. I supported this project at the BPDA Board, as it is the exact type of project that will help us meet the housing affordability crisis. The West End has experienced a profound vacancy in the office market, and this will make sure we are efficiently utilizing important space. For these reasons, I urge the board to support the proposal before you today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christian?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semali, Boston Brownler Trust. And we have both G Card loads from the app...
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semali, Boston Browner Trust, and we have both G Card lows from the applicant.
Thanks.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA one six two two, uh, excuse me, case BOA one six two six three eight six with the address of forty-one to forty-five Broad Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Sure. Good morning, everybody. Uh, my name is Melissa Fredolosa. I'm the owner of Mini Donut Diva. I'm currently operating um, outside of, of the Cloud kitchens in Roxbury, but relocating to the former Starbucks on forty-five Broad Street. Um, we are not attempting to change the occupancy. We're still gonna be a restaurant with takeout with eighteen seats. Um, the brand going over there will be Eatery on Broad, which will house three different of my own brands. So it'll be kind of like a, a scaled-down food hub, uh, location. Uh, we have been working with Eva on the community process and are just requesting to have the proviso removed from the, uh, certificate of inspection and occupancy.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding forty-one to forty-five Broad Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutters meeting held on nine six twenty-four, which was attended by two constituents. The primary feedback was some concerns about loitering due to closing hours, uh, but overall, the community feedback was positive. Uh, additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Wharf District Neighborhood Council, which convened on eleven nineteen twenty-four. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's, to, excuse me, to propose to the board's decision at this time. Thank you for your time and consideration, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure we have no additional raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Uh, yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next case is deferred, so with that, we'll move on to case BOA one five seven five three two nine with the address of thirty Haynes Street. If the applicant's in or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Um, my name's Ali Khan. I'm the applicant and the resident and the owner. Um, the project is, um, fairly simple. Um, there's, um, a roof with access from my unit only uh, with an existing headhouse, and I'm proposing to construct a, um, roof deck on the flat rubber roof. No changes to the entrance, exit egress, or anything else. Just, just putting up the, uh, the deck and the railings. Um, went through the community process and the abutters meeting, and I believe there was just positive feedback, um, and so I'm hoping to just go ahead with that.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Eva Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding thirty Haynes Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was con- conducted, including an abutters meeting on five twenty-three twenty-four, which was attended by about two constituents. The primary feedback from this meeting was positive and constituents were supportive. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the Jeffries Point Neighborhood, Neighborhood Association, which also expressed support on this proposal. Thank you for your time and consideration, everybody. We will defer to this matter.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Park from Council Coletus Office. At this time, based on community support, the council would like to go and support this project as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I have no raised hands.
With that, may I have a motion?
Motion can't prove.
Uh, I just want-
I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just have a question about, um, in, in the BPDA's recommendation, um, it says that a minimum of seven feet is required uh, in terms of a setback of the, uh, the roof deck from the front and that, uh, so there's an insu- insufficient setbacks. Can the applicant just talk about how far is the deck, is the roof deck setback from the front of the building?
Mm-hmm. Um, the set deck is about four feet and I, that was, um, basically in line with the adjacent decks to the left and, and right, about two houses over.
Yeah. Um, yeah, so I think the, the BPDA is recommending it to be setback even further, so it's not, could not be seen from the street. So I think our recommendation's gonna be for you to work with the city to, the planning department to, to look at that setback.
So are you making a motion, Ms. Panado?
Yes, but I'm talking to the applicant because he's, doesn't have an architect, so, so the, the notion is that you might have a smaller roof deck, um, based on our motion.
Um, I do have an architect. Um, I'm, I'm happy if that's the, if that's the sort of main sticking point to, you know, uh, in the, in the next iteration, um, move that back to a seven-foot setback. Um, I think from my perspective, the, the process is already been quite lengthy and, and if it's a matter of, you know, changing that, that back from the front uh, from four foot to seven foot, I'm, I'm happy to just modify it and, and go ahead with that.
Okay, so I will, I will make a motion, um, for approval with proviso that the plans be submitted to the planning department for design review with attention to increasing the front setback of the roof deck.
Is that our second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. S- thank you. Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Moving on to re-discussions scheduled for eleven thirty. My apologies for not mentioning that we passed that before. Um, we're, we're on to case BOA one six two one zero nine zero with the address of twenty-two Perrin Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Hi, can you guys see me okay? Yes, sir. Um, I was, uh, here before the, uh, the project was, uh, to, taking a carriage house in the back of, uh, my, my house and putting two units in it. And it was approved, but then after, or I was moving along in the process, they pointed out that I had needed to, um, file a separate appeal for the fact that it's two buildings, one lot. So I've, uh, filed that appeal and now I'm back for, uh, for that, and I'm not exactly sure what, um, I don't want to give you unnecessary information, so what, uh, what would you like to know?
Uh, well, you have some folks who may not have sat on your last case, so if you could, uh, if you could just briefly remind people what you're proposing.
Okay.
Really helpful.
It's, it's a, it's a carriage house in the, uh, back of the property, twenty-two Perrin Street. And it's a proposed two units into the carriage house. And the changes to the building are an exterior stairwell and the location of doors and windows. Everything else will just be, um, will be like replaced because it's all kind of rotting, but it'll stay the same. The building will stay the same.
And can you speak to parking? I believe that was a, a sticking point with, uh, abutters and neighbors at your last hearing?
Yes, at the last hearing that did come up, and, uh, I met with the parking department and got a stamped plan. Um, I sent in, I'm hoping you guys got it, but, uh, I also worked with the, the neighbor, the neighbors who had an issue with that and they're, uh, they're all set and said, uh, they wrote a letter of approval as well.
They did submit a letter of support. Are there question, other questions from the board?
I have a quick question. Um, so I don't think I was on the prior hearing for this, um, but I see, you know, you've submitted a turning radius for a fire truck. Does that mean that rear building won't be sprinklered?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm waiting to hear what the fire department says they want from me. I was hoping not to have to just because of the cost of it. Um, not that I don't like the idea of having sprinklers, but I'm, I'm new to the process, I'm, so, I'm not sure. I was under the impression the fire department was the next step and they'd tell me what they, what they want.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judge from this board. Uh, as you heard, um, since the last time that this was before the board, uh, the applicant worked to get additional information to the Roxbury path forward. Uh, they issued a letter in support, uh, while still expressing concerns with just kind of larger projects being approved with, uh, what they feel is not adequate parking. Um, previously, our office had had an abutters meeting for this. Um, many in the neighborhood are happy that the carriage house is gonna be retained and restored. Um, there had been some concerns regarding, um, Boston Fire Department's potential to access the property in the rear, um, but the applicant was able to provide further information, uh, including information from the fire department in regards to that. Uh, with that, we defer to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other raised hands?
I'm sure we have no additional raised hands.
Okay, any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yeah.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Ms. Panado?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck. And, uh, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I'll see some of you, uh, next week.
Thank you.
Thanksgiving.
Happy.
Happy Thanksgiving to you all.
Recording stopped.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.